Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Appoint a permanent chairperson.
I'll make a motion that Scott. Be chairman.
I'll second that. There's a motion and a second. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And before we move on, I want to thank um the Carroll County constituents and the Board of Supervisors for allowing me to serve as chair for the last three years. It's been an honor. I've learned a lot and I've enjoyed every moment of it. And I'm excited for Scott to lead it from here. So, thank you and thank you, everybody and anybody that listens online.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Thanks.
Thank you for three years. Number three. Appoint vice chairperson.
Do you appoint Stephanie vice chair?
I'll second that, I guess.
The motion, the second. For Stephanie to be vice chair. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Secondary, number four, secondary roads, review and approve pickup quote. Zach.
Good morning. I'm gonna have a hard time not.
You can stop talking. This is uh looking to replace Chris's truck. It's getting up there and mild and trying to move that into the fleet. And get him. Um, very similar to what he's got, so. Got two quotes, one from uh. Uh, basically piggybacking off of the the state bid through Carl Auto and also got a local one from Motor Inn. And tried to be very particular in getting the parent apples to apples. Um, and if we have a review what I had sent, but the. MSRP's are identical, so I feel pretty. Pretty good that we got apples to apples on this one, so. Um. Motor Inn had a, their their quote was fifty-two, seven thirty-five. Carl Automotive. Red Page was fifty-two, fifty-eight and eighty cents. So. Um. I guess my recommendation is to go with the. The low quote with Carl Auto. Um, then I'm open discussion from you guys.
Is there any difference on availability between the two?
I don't believe so. I think the. I, last I've talked with both of them, they're not, they're somewhat available. I mean, we're talking three, four months. I think the. Timeline to get it's gonna be about the same from both vendors.
Even with Carl, it's gonna be two to three months?
I think so, because it's gonna, it's getting built to what we're wanting, so it's not something on the lot somewhere.
Well, for keeping business in town, just to save taxpayers money, sometimes we have to do alternative. Choices, I guess, but taking your recommendation on this. It's a, well, it's apples for apples. I mean. If there's a few more things on motor in that they haven't had that I give you. I definitely like to keep business in town or in the county if we can.
Have you talked to Motor Inn and asked them to match Carl's number?
I have not. I didn't know how far to go with that. I mean, because then you can go both ways, you know, I mean, I. It's a, it's a.
Bit of bit.
Fine line, you know, I.
How far do you push that?
They, they, I think both knew who I was getting quotes from, so they were aware of I was getting quotes from both each one, so.
Well, the big difference you look at this is in that state bid.
Right.
Do we have to go to the state debt or supposed to, or?
No, it's just that they get, we get a.
Better deal.
Discount they get from the government is what I do.
Manufacturer suggested retail price is fifty-seven, seventy-five on both.
Yeah, they're both identical.
So it's a matter of.
Who can come up with a better deal? Yeah, it's unfortunate because you know, like what Mark said, I'd love to keep the business. Local. And if it was within five hundred dollars, you know, I. Really have to think it, but you know, at the end of the day, we gotta think about the checkbook and it's a taxpayer dollars and it's not, it's it's more than that, so.
We have a trouble to get warranty work repaired. We need warranty work. We have to take all the guys down with noise with me.
I don't think so. I don't think that'd be a problem. Um. We bought our, the last three trucks we had came from them, so I mean, I, I, I wouldn't think that'd be an issue.
And a lot of our mechanics can probably do a lot of the work, correct?
We, we do most of, most of the stuff ourselves. Warranty work would be, would be something that would go. Obviously, but.
Well, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the quote and purchase from Carl Chevrolet for fifty thousand, two hundred and fifty-eight dollars and eighty cents.
I'll second that.
We have a motion, we have a second to purchase the. Truck for fifty thousand, two hundred and fifty-eight dollars from Carl Chevrolet. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else for me?
Number five, Carroll County Soil and Water Conservation Fiscal Year twenty-five. Funding request.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm John Costa, Vice Chair of the Soil and Water, Tom Simon, Chairman. Um, we're here today to ask for a supplementary. To. Our budget. Uh, as you know, we are a partner of the Carroll County. Uh, with soil and water, and I do believe that uh. We have made some pretty good inroads on conservation compared to what we've had in the past. We've had. A number of different programs out there that we uh, basically, we uh. Uh, supervise over and recommendations of what can be done as far as soil and water. Uh, we do have a new program that come on board here over a year ago. Uh, it's the uh. This um. Iowa Lambs and forage. Uh, and what that amounts to is it's a means of uh creating uh. Uh, some. For, for people to uh increase their ability to make an income. And it has a lot to do with livestock. And the water quality. Uh, cover crops. That's one of the things that we uh. Try to push. And if I, Tom will back me up on this uh. Last year. We had something like a five thousand and some acres of cover crop. And this year we. Pretty well almost doubled it because of these programs. Uh, that's available. And uh. We have on our staff or basically true idols is uh. A coordinator for this program and uh. We feel that she's really done a great job. Of uh bringing this program along. Um.
If I can just say a few things here, John.
Go ahead.
This person that we got hired, she's a district employee, so we are paying her. Um, if you looked on our. Our budget from last year and stuff like that, we got two programs. It's called the SRF five twelve. And RCC program and what they are. The five twelve is basically. Implementing a lot of the cover crop programs and stuff like that. And RCPP is for more structural stuff like that for. Different parts of, you know, what's, what this person is doing for us, but.
This Deborah Venami you're talking about?
Pardon me?
Deborah Venami?
No.
Oh.
No, it's uh. Ashley Briggs.
Okay.
To your young girl. She was born, raised right south of Swan Lake down here and stuff like that, but. She is a very, very well. And good employee for us and very knowledgeable on what she's doing. She's young, energetic and. And uh, you know, if you ever get a chance to talk to her or whatever, it'd be very well worth your time, but. She's been very good for us and stuff like that, so you know, these are two programs that she's doing and. And uh, like John was saying earlier there, it's more about um. Some of the programs are more about getting more livestock into the area. Meaning. Cows, a cow herd and stuff like that. So that's basically a lot of the things she's working on is cow herd and stuff like that, getting them. Going which, you know, it's. Very good for Carroll County and stuff like that, and we know we need cattle in this county and stuff like that, so she's been working on that, so. Go ahead, John.
Now, sorry to interrupt, but. That's all right. That's why I brought you on. No, as far as cover crops and that, of course, I, I've been uh no-tilling and cover crops for quite a few years and uh, and I've seen the benefits of it. And uh, as you know. We're, we're not actually a flat county, but uh, there is some flat ground there, but that even soil moves on flat ground. And uh. I think uh. With the cattle feeders that are around here and we've been promoting to get more cover crop on to those grounds to. Keep the erosion down, wa- water quality is a big thing, even though we've been into a drought for quite a few years here. Uh, the um. Water sampling that we have been doing over the years has not been happening the last couple of years, but we sure like to get it started again. Um, and uh. Once we do that, we're still gotta find a place to get it. The water samples going, so that's all kind of on us as far as the board is concerned. And. I guess uh, long and or short, that's why we're here.
Other, other things that we got going is um. You know, over the years, we've been promoting livestock building cattle barns and stuff like that, which is hard to believe, but we still got big demand for cattle barns and. Every time we put up a cattle barn in this county. It goes into the tax base. So which in turn. Helps the county out again, you know, we, we talk about that every year and stuff like that, but it's just. It's hard to believe that we still have a demand for. For cattle barns, you know, which, you know, anymore a million dollars don't go very far when you start putting up a. A cattle barn and stuff like that, so you know, these are things that we can. Help put money in. We got the low interest loan available through our office. Excuse me, which. Uh, producers can get up, you know, I think five hundred thousand dollars at three percent money, which is. Which is a big deal, you know, when you start spending a million dollars, you know, it's half the deal, but understanding that still gotta be paid back, so. You know, that's one thing we're probably moving in, you know, we got. All kinds of things, but I got it. I gotta go back to Ashley and you know what she does for us and she is a county employee, so, or us. You know.
Soil.
For us as a, as a district, stuff like that, so.
I think what you guys do is.
Excellent. Anybody have a question?
No.
And your request this year is?
Pardon me?
Is your request this year the same as last year?
Yes, yes, yeah. I think we asked for six thousand last year, I think, or whatever, but I think we received forty-five.
Forty-five hundred.
Something like that, so. Yeah, so, you know, you guys can talk it over and. See what you can come up with and we'll go from there. Anything you can do for us, appreciate it. We want you all to have a happy new year, so.
Good, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, time.
Six thousand, yeah.
Yeah, it was six thousand, I should have just put them.
Courtney, should you say fiscal year twenty-six instead of twenty-five? Yeah, okay. So that's, yeah. I mentioned that on the agenda. Um, item number six. Animal rescue league. Fiscal year twenty-six funding request. If you, anybody here who would like to come speak? Okay. So we can come back to that. All right. All right. We'll move on to number seven, Arcadia Trail update. Good morning. Please, like, introduce yourself and we can introduce ourselves when you're done.
Thank you.
Kind of intimidating, you know. And a podium.
That's a good thing.
It is, very nice room, very nice.
I'm Pat Vogel and the President of the Arcadia Development Corporation. This is May Venami. Um, one of the.
Morning.
Good morning.
I'm Scott Johnson.
Stephanie Houseman.
They don't know me.
One, thank you for letting us approach you this morning on our project. Um. Last year. We talked to you about phase one of the project and you. And it turned to the map. Last page of the, of the uh. Handout. You can see. The pink was highlighted in pink. Was phase one. Which we completed last year. And. That's such a valuable asset to our community and that it's getting traffic off of Center Street there. That's the blacktop that comes into Arcadia from the east. And that. We approached you last year and you folks approved fifteen thousand dollars to help us get that done. We had a lot of, it was a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollar project, so we had a lot of uh. Money come in from different grants and organizations from Arcadia. As well as a real huge anonymous donation on that. But now, if you're looking at the map, you can see that the blue part is phase two, and that's what we'd like to approach you with this morning. Um. This is M sixty-eight. Which is county highway going through Arcadia. Um. It would connect. Um, Center Street where the, the basic share of the trail. Road is. Is located. And constructed with Leroy Street, which is. One of the new subdivisions. We have in Arcadia. So. In, in getting this. This um. Connecting trail. Constructed. That would allow. All the people and the kids. From the Reddick subdivision as well as from the Von Ateen. Subdivision. Able to access our trail along Center Street without. Getting on M sixty-eight. So what this project involves is pouring four hundred and forty feet of concrete along Division Street. From center to Leroy. And in doing that, we'll, we will be working with two homeowners who live along that route. Um, we'll be widening and replacing two hundred and twenty feet of sidewalk that runs in front of those two properties. Um. That are already established there. So being we've, we have the big part of this project completed. We want to make sure that we get this connecting. Trail. Um, that connects the subdivisions. To the share the road trail. Um, constructed. We want to do that this year. And it's very important, I feel. To have the kids out of the subdivision. There's a lot of young families and, and children and stuff. Who can, who would be able to get to the, get to the trail without getting on M sixty-eight. We have a lot of traffic on M sixty-eight from the co-op. Um, campers and things going up to, to. Blackhawk Lake. Um, there's, there's farm traffic, there's trucks, there's all kind of, of traffic through that. It's highly, highly traveled, so. We'd like to get this little connection. So that you keep everybody off M sixty-eight. Um.
So Zach, I have a question for you. So M sixty-eight is gonna get resurfaced in twenty twenty-seven?
This is your twenty-seventh is what we're looking at for doing north of North of town.
But that won't be this?
Through town.
Okay.
Twenty-seven.
All right, thank you.
But our, our east and west.
East west, yes.
Is gonna be.
On the fifth street or Center Street.
Yeah.
East, we're looking at like a, a local project along with our federal project to do. East of Division or M sixty-eight. To uh. The Eagle and then back to Highway thirty.
And making that whole thing hard surface or been part of a gravel?
Do, we'd be resurfacing the park is, that is hard surface.
Okay.
So this wouldn't.
Here the, the concrete project they're asking wouldn't interfere with.
What I understand, they're staying off of the road and.
Okay.
So into the width of the sidewalk, having separation from the road, which I think is great.
Where, where's your trail? Would it be next to the road or separated from the road?
This phase two will be separate.
So it's gonna be where the original. It'll be basically where the original sidewalk.
Right. But the idea is to even replace their sidewalk, the two property owners there. Have a narrow sidewalk. If we bring this trail in, we'll just take up that whole sidewalk and do a whole trail, level it out. Over concrete and then we'll also match in there directly. So the estimate includes, you know, taking care of them too.
And also just the fact that. The two lots are in the um Von Ateen. Development. There's no houses there now, so it would like to get it done before there's houses there, because then we wouldn't have to work two of them. And when they plan where they're gonna put their house, they know that's there. Work with the, with our trail. Another thing was, um, you mentioned just connecting the, the. The two divisions and the share of the road. We're hoping in the future that we can work with getting some kind of a crossway across. Across M sixty-eight.
Flashing light or something like that, so.
That would.
Next, there isn't.
City park.
Across Highway thirty. You know, we're thinking. To get uh people from.
Is up for safety.
Out of town, not in town.
Either.
In town.
On the west.
Either. It would be a safe crossing.
So, that's another, that's down the road, but if we can just get our, our subdivisions connected to the trail now, that would make for a loop. For the kids and the, and the joggers and walkers. They'll be able to walk around the, the subdivisions up and around, actually through the ball field or cemetery and come back down without accessing any traffic at all. So our estimate on that is right at twenty-nine thousand. We've already applied for a grant through Carroll. Community Foundation. We're going to, of course. Um, also. I've put applications in for Renzi and Timmerman. I'm looking, we'll get some from the town, the community club, hopefully the Woodman, and we're gonna try to. Straight together twenty-nine thousand so we can get this done this year.
So your estimate is twenty-nine thousand from the county?
Yeah. Well, no, that's.
No, they're asking thirty-five hundred.
Yeah.
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five hundred from the county.
Unless you see fit.
Yeah.
We'd welcome more, but we don't want to over.
No, we appreciate last year the, the amount we got, you know, comparable to that. We thought this was comparable to our end dollar percentage wise.
Yep. So this is eleven percent and uh. Last year.
I'm full orders, Scott, just give me.
Yeah. Last year the money we got did come.
Local option sales tax instead of property tax.
So. The other thing we wanted to mention, we don't, we don't plan to come to you every year. With the, with a plea. But it's, we feel it's very important to get these trails connected and get the, get the kids and walkers and joggers off the. The highly trafficked.
And normally we would weigh on our city council a lot more, but with us just doing our sewer project and our water tower and everything, they're kind of locked up, so. We'd like to see it keep moving. Get going.
We may have any further question? You can add this to our um. Chair list.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Item number eight. Adopt resolution regarding special moving permits. Zach, you want to explain or do you want me to? This is for, it just allows us. To. Give the engineer's office the authority to prove um special moving permits. Yearly housekeeping item.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Oh, sorry. Courtney, roll call please. Yes.
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 Since we have several of these off and gone to them and pass them around.
Number nine. Resolution. Regarding fixed charges.
And this is what gives the auditor the authority. Um. Or do you like?
It allows. The auditor to issue salary and payroll. The one that the salary has been approved by the board. So when you guys set the salary for in the year, this will allow you to issue payroll without you guys having to approve payroll every single time. Um, also allows you to issue that for things like credit cards, like telephone contact services, um. If it happens to fall.
Have a motion to approve.
Resolution for fixed charges.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? If not, Courtney, roll call please.
Yes.
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 Thank you. Item number ten, adopt resolution regarding the destruction of records. And this again defaults to the state law, three thirty-one, three twenty-three. That says basically, um, it names the offices which have to hold records for ten years, that they can dispose of them after ten years.
Keep longer at all? Okay, that's what I'm asking.
This is again, it's just a, a housekeeping issue every year.
Do, so like, there are certain departments, like clerk of courts, I have to keep their records forever, but there are certain other elected officials obviously.
I just wanna say, yeah, and then somebody comes from twelve years, so you guys have this, that's.
Yeah.
All right.
And the clerk of courts is governed by the state, not us.
Okay.
So moved.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve, approve the resolution for destruction.
Yes.
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 Right?
Yes.
Number eleven, adopt resolution naming official county newspapers. Um, so this resolution. Says that the Daily Times Herald. Out of Carroll, Coon Rapids Enterprise, Coon Rapids, the Manning Monitor. And Manning as the official newspapers for Carroll County in twenty twenty-five.
Do they apply for this or what do they do?
I think it goes by circulation is one thing, and I think that there are others who would like to be on this, but again, it costs the county.
Oh, it costs the county?
Yeah.
Okay, that's why the golden graphic wasn't in there, because I know they're always looking for news articles. It'd be great to have something like that in there.
But this is.
Forward, and it's been the numbers.
This is for publication of our legals, our minutes, our.
Yep, I'm just asking, I was just curious.
So I'll entertain a motion. And it's resolution.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt a resolution naming official county newspapers. Roll call please, Courtney. Yes.
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 Motion carries.
Number, item number twelve, approve twenty twenty-five holiday schedule. And I know this comes up every year. I mean, this, I think what we have in front of us is to approve what last year was, but the state observes Martin Luther King. On January twentieth, and the state does not do President's Day on February seventeenth, where the county does. The way it has been, and I don't know if there's been any debate or discussion, but. Yeah. So I will entertain a motion to, uh, the new dates are on there, but it's the same holiday schedule as last year.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call please, Courtney. Wait. Oh. I get it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay, motion carries. Approve county board of health. Member. And I did receive an email over the weekend from Becky Venami. She confirmed it via text, and then I see we did get an email this morning also. Oh, she sent one to the Board of Supervisors, but evidently she has, she was out of town and she had it laying on her counter waiting to be mailed back. So. I'm looking for a motion to reappoint Becky Venami for a three-year term.
Reappoint Becky Venami.
Is our second?
We have any other ones?
There was none in the list, and we're gonna come up to several of these who did not. So this year, first year, we had our expression of interest form. Courtney spent a lot of time and. Um, self-addressed stamped envelopes back to these people, asking them to complete a form. Several we have not got back yet, and I assume we will be nerves, but if we want to wait until we get it, we can absolutely do that.
Well, I think as long as you express interest, it confirms that's.
I think we all got it. And then I do have a text saying that.
So this is a five-person board?
It is.
And.
The county has, a supervisor has one. One seat that is a voting member.
And the other. Three seats are not up.
Nope.
Well, they rotate on.
So next year it will be Dr. Michelle Heim will be up. And then in twenty twenty-six, there will be Nick Collin, Julie Hodnay. And then in twenty twenty-six, there will be Nick Cullen, Julie Hodney. And Mike Anderson's term will expire. So we have a motion, is there a second?
Um, I'll, I'll second it.
Okay, there is a motion and we have a second. Is there any more discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Item number fourteen, appoint. County ambulance service board members. There's two of them. And um Lori Pedic resigned um mid-year, and she was not replaced, so we still need to find a replacement for her. Weston Hurst, Olsted. Jamie said is interested in replacing Paula McDonald, who expired, whose term expired. And we do not have a letter of express, or expression of interest from him either, as that was a verbal. So I don't know if the board wants to approve appointing one of the two vacancies. Or wait till we get um somebody to replace Lori Pedic also.
I think there needs to have, I think we need to have a conversation with Jamie in reference to this, because I think there's gonna be a little bit of restructuring when it comes to the ambulance, that, that section. So can we? Not make a motion or a move on this decision and have a conversation with Jamie and see which direction he wants to go?
I'm open to that. I do know that um Jamie has spoken to Weston and that, that appointment is fine, because he's doing the scheduling now for Coon Rapids, which is what Paulette did.
So could we?
I think we should appoint him and then.
Weston and then.
Then we'll, we'll still have a vacancy for the Lori Pedic.
Yeah.
Resign, okay.
Is that all right with the board?
If we don't have anybody to.
Point Weston and then um we'll have a conversation with Jamie whether Scott or I make a conversation with him or have a conversation during budget.
And just for the board, um Stephanie and I are on the ambulance board, but we're just non-voting members. So um they don't meet often, but if they do, there are two supervisors.
Policy type.
It is.
Policy or there's a position.
If there's, yep. So I'll entertain a motion then to.
Oh, uh, oh. Weston, okay.
He, he's currently a. Yes.
I'll make a motion.
To approve Weston to replace Paulette.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second for Weston to replace Paulette. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. So Courtney, we still will have one for.
I can reach out to, I'll reach out to Jamie.
I talked to him over the weekend. He still didn't have anybody yet that he knew of. Number fifteen, appoint conservation member. Dave Burmeister, his term expired. He did reapply and did fill out the. So.
There's a second one. Let me see that.
Says.
There's only one, I'm sure.
Um, no. Carla Hacker is gonna be resigning and. Wish Mike was here, he'll know the name of the guy that's gonna be replacing her, but they do have somebody else.
Have they filled out the expression of interest form yet? I didn't see one. Did you get one, Courtney? Another one for conservation? I didn't. Yeah, Dave Burmeister.
We haven't had a letter of resignation, I'd say we.
It's the point one that expired.
Expired now, we'll point that and let that come about when we get that letter of resignation.
So I'll.
So I'll make them, I'll make a motion. I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, reappoint Dave Burmeister. For five-year term for conservation. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Appoint Veterans of, uh, Veterans Affairs Commission, one member. Um, Joanne Thomas, and she did reapply from Templeton for a three-year term. Entertain a motion to reappoint her.
So move.
So motion second, any more discussion? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Um. Appoint county medical examiner. Um, Dr. Michael Slattery did agree to a, another three-year or two-year term. He did reapply. Um. So I would entertain a motion to reappoint Dr. Michael Slattery.
Second.
So motion and second, any discussion? Not all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Number eighteen, appoint county med.
When we do that, uh, Josh is picked by Slattery, right?
Well, I think.
Assistant?
No, they both have to reapply.
Okay.
And um, yeah. So number eighteen is appoint assistant county medical examiner. I do have an email from Dr. Williams. I do not. Um, his expression of interest has not been received yet unless you got some over the weekend. That's not weekends, Thursday. Um. So we can wait on that one until we get that letter, but I do have a, an email that he will do another two-year term.
Just make, I'll make the motion we appointed then.
We have a motion to reappoint Dr. Josh Williams. There's a motion, it's. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Appoint Carol, or appoint weed commissioner. We did receive from Tony Vogel, he did reapply. This is an annual appointment. I think we all had a copy of his expression of interest letter, so I entertain a motion to reappoint Tony Vogel.
I'll make a motion.
Jean can't vote. Any more discussion? We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Opposed. Stained.
Motion carries. Appoint zoning administrator. Sarah Haberl did reapply.
So move.
This is an annual appointment. There's a motion and a second. Will this? Okay. So there's a motion and a second, all in favor of reappointing Sarah Haberl, zoning commission administrator, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Yep. Yes.
Um, sorry, I found the email. There is a letter of resignation. I sent that to you guys, um, Carla Hacker off the conservation board, and they would like, I would like to nominate Keith Fanami to take her position on the conservation board.
I'll second that.
There's a motion.
Alright, so we have a motion and a second to um accept Carla Hacker's resignation. And to um appoint Keith Fanami in that position, or his, he will be filling this until. Um, twenty twenty-six, the end of twenty-six, so it will be a two-year appointment then for Keith Fanami. So we have motion, second, all saying aye.
Aye.
Motion ca, motion carries. Number twenty-one, appoint county zoning. So. We have five openings. One of them did reapply, Jason Klein. We have his um letters were sent to Jacob Johnson, Katie Holtz, and Bill Fanami. By recollection, we have not received any of those. Okay. So we can appoint one of the five annual zoning commissioners, Jason Klein, and um.
Somebody wants to reach out to um Bill Fanami, Katie Holtz, or Jacob Johnson, or we can wait.
And see if something comes in the mail today or before Monday, because we're gonna have to go back through it.
So you want to wait till they get those applications back or some sort of verbal?
I wouldn't suggest that we have one for Jason Klein, we go ahead.
Is there a motion or should we wait on all five?
I'll move to improve Jason Klein. I'll second him.
We have a motion and a second to replace one of the five. Any more discussion? If not, all in favor of Jason Klein signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Appoint Carroll County Board of Adjustment, five-year term. We received um an expression of interest from Jeremy Carroll. Who replaces, I believe it was.
So there, there's no behind her. Did they show an interest? They didn't want to?
No, she had um made an announcement that she was resigning ahead of time. So that was.
Same way with the one above.
Yes.
You know.
Well, the one above wasn't necessarily a resignation, this is um, yeah, not reappointing. So I'll entertain a motion to um have Jeremy Carroll um for a five-year term on Carroll County Board of Adjustment.
Well, there's only one seat there, okay.
There's a motion, we have a second. For Jeremy Carroll. Mark seconds. So all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Appoint to um County Solid Waste Commission. Currently, I am the person on that, and I'm interested in another annual term.
Girl County Solid Waste Commission, board member?
There's a motion and a second, any discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Appoint City of Carroll Planning and Zoning Board Two Mile Limit. We have one person.
Uh, which is Jane Pedig. And I also, I mean, my only discussion on this is this probably. Could be a fluid situation here in the next month, it could change, so.
I would agree.
You know what, I think I would suggest we do, I mean, we reappoint both these, because we don't know what's going to. It's like you said, this kind of fluid, it could change, could be.
Yes. No, I think she reapplied. I think we can appoint her, but I, I, yes, the, the future of this is, is fluid.
Take it too.
Yeah.
Fluid would be an easy way of saying it, but so um reappointment of Jane Pedig for a um. Term, it doesn't, for a five-year term.
Oh, I guess one is not up yet. I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Appoint City Board of Adjustment Two Mile Limit. Um Ruth Nelson has um expressed interest in not being reappointed, and for that one, we still need to find someone.
There's again another case.
Yes. So no action will be taken on that one.
But I kind of like it though. I don't, I don't have much time to spend on this until we get a direction of where there are two miles limit.
I think this, the zoning, the county zoning, we have to do regardless of the two miles, so we're still four open seats on that. Um, appoint to Region Twelve Council of Governments Executive Board. Currently, it's Stephanie Housman. This is an annual um appointment. And if Stephanie's interested in continuing.
We moved.
There's a motion, second, to reappoint Stephanie Housman to Region Twelve. Council of Governments Executive Board, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Appoint two members to Region of Twelve Council of Governments. So, current.
It's currently Mike Anderson and you.
Right.
Can it be me and you?
I don't know that. I know Mike does not want to continue.
In the past, it's never been the same.
Same as the executive.
And Mark has expressed interest.
In the policy council? He didn't know he expressed the interest.
Well, we've talked about.
No, but I was thinking Mike said he has trouble making their Thursday night meetings, probably four times a year.
Yeah.
And I can have a conversation with Region Twelve and ask um. Do we have to have two members?
Okay.
Seems like each county does have two.
They do.
Yeah.
Outside of the executive.
And like I said, it's always been, there's the, the executive board and then there's policy board. They've been separate.
As the exec board, I still go in.
I was gonna say, I think you're sitting in as more of a courtesy than a.
Well, I'll move to go ahead and reappoint Scott Johnson to the Region Twelve Council of Governments Policy Council. And we'll, we'll figure out.
Back to back, okay, go, go, go.
It looks good. It's gonna be, he has a hard time making me listen through it right now.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then we'll, okay, so we'll remove Mike Anderson and we will put Mark McCray to serve that.
And these are annual positions also. Alright, so we have Scott Johnson and Mark McCray for Region Twelve Council of Governments Policy Council. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
So.
Number twenty-eight, appoint to Western Iowa Tourism Board. I did talk with Jason Christensen, and he is um. Fine with doing another term. He verbally accepted. Go ahead, Seth.
Second.
Motion and second, Jason Christensen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, most. Appoint East Township Trustee. Um, he did reapply and um. So move. Motion and a second to reappoint Del.
For East Township Trustee for a year term.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Point Maple River Township Trustee. Um, William Schrod's term expires, this is a four-year term. He did reapply. It's my recommendation to reappoint. We have a motion and two seconds, two motions. Um, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Appoint Pleasant Valley Township Trustee. We have Daryl Quant up for a four-year term. There was no, nothing has been received on that one. And nobody else has expressed interest, so.
We're kind of, they're in a position, they, they've got to be appointed here shortly, because they gotta work on their budget also. That's what I'm thinking. On who, who'd you say last? Oh, okay. Yeah. So I'll make, I'll make a motion that we reappoint him.
There's a motion and a second to reappoint Dale Quant for a four-year term for Pleasant Valley Township Trustee. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Number thirty-two, we're getting there. Appoint Roselle Township Trustee. Leon Baumover's term expired in the year, and we have received nothing on that one.
Again, I'll make a motion to approve that one, kind of time on this.
Alright, there's a motion to reappoint Leon Baumover and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Appoint County Con- condemnation compensation commissioners, Iowa Code Chapter six B four. So on this one, Linda Halber did reapply. But no, um, Virginia Schultes wrote a letter that she does not continue. And though. Have received.
That's just on the farm.
But those are on the next day.
Yeah, but they all the same group. Just that there's different divisions in that group.
Oh, because we did, the, the two realtors we got were Brandon Snyder and Mike Franny.
I'm a. Onion. Purnell Woodtruck has got no behind it.
No, Virginia Schultes said no.
No, but.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, okay. Linda Halber and Mike Franny and Brandon Snyder are the ones who did reapply. Larry Sporer.
Hey, this is the one, and Larry Sporer said no.
He said no also, yep.
This is the one that you're going to have the hardest time finding people. So I would suggest that you reappoint everybody. Except the ones that show no.
So is that a motion?
I'll make that motion. And then we got, we'll have to find somebody to fill those two no, those three no's.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. To reappoint. County Condemnation Compensation Commissioners for Iowa Code. Chapter Six Four B. Any more discussion?
There is also another one on that last group that I would like to talk to, I'm not sure that he wants to do it anymore, but. For the time being, I would reappoint him till we get.
The Larry Sporer.
No, there's one on top of the list, I don't want to mention his name.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye, aye. Motion carries. Chairperson. Number thirty-four, Chairperson to the assignments. So when I went through these. The current list, I think we need to add Mark McCray for Region Twelve Policy Council. And.
Is there something we talked about last week, Mike and I doing with the? Union?
That's, well, that's the very bottom.
Okay.
And then under Scott Johnson, I'm also with Stephanie on the General Assistance Audit Team. Two of us to do that. And under Mike Anderson. Conservation Board, I think should also in parentheses say non-voting member. And recommendations. Mark McCray and Mike Anderson have volunteered to do ambulance department. Negotiations team. No. Mark McCray and Mike Anderson. Replacing Eugene Miners and Scott Johnson, and those are the ones I have highlighted from the current existing list. Unless. Anybody has any other suggestions?
So I do, actually. Since we'll be removing Region Twelve Council of Governments Policy from Mike Anderson, who and I have talked. About the Hunger Canyons and the L H B C A Board of Development and Conservation Authority. So those go hand in hand with the Raccoon River.
The water sheds, yep.
And we, I would like to move those two boards from mine duties up to Mike, so that. Basically, four of those committee boards are actually more. Yeah, they have different aims because they get sometimes some random funding, I mean, Zach can contest, it's. You either get a quorum or you don't, and they normally don't because there's not funding. So I don't. Just to streamline, streamline this a little bit, Mike can handle the, the other two. Conservation Authority Board.
I would agree with that. And Courtney, is there any formal? Says chair to make appointments, there's no formal action on that?
Just need a motion, don't you? Approve.
Did you get all those changes?
So moved.
There's a motion and a second for the approval as discussed of the Supervisor Committee Appointment Updates. All those in favor signify by saying aye, aye. Opposed, motion carries.
He passed away, he said?
Yes.
Twenty twenty-six term. For the one of the adjustment, who lives in two miles?
Oh, thank you.
There again, that could be fluid, depends on what we do with Cheryl.
Exactly, yeah, both those two miles. Number thirty-five, adopt resolution twenty twenty-five oh oh one, construction evaluation.
Removed.
There is a motion and a second. To approve Resolution twenty twenty-five oh oh one, construction evaluation, roll call please, Courtney. Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Number thirty-six. This is going to be new for us, Adopt Resolution twenty-five oh oh two, Appointment of Deputy Auditors, Courtney, explain, please.
But there's really no change in your staff titles or nothing?
But technically, after every.
But every, after every election.
Every election, so in two years, it'll be the treasurer recorder. Yes, and county attorney.
So this year.
Technically, the sheriff should do the same thing. Yes.
That's great, not every time when you make somebody a deputy, especially when we're doing salary adjustments, Courtney, you know firsthand. It's not always beneficial to have somebody as a deputy. And sometimes it backfires. So it kind of depends on how you want to move forward, but I, I, I'm all for this resolution, I think it's wonderful.
I mean. I have an administrative assistance, which is technically a deputy. And then a deputy auditor, both of my deputies have over forty years. So they definitely wrote the title of deputy. If I'm not, I mean, basically, they're saying that if I'm not there, they have to pay over and. Get the job done, which probably will mark. If you want, I can give the sample to the sheriff and ask him if he would be willing to update it with his information and then you can do that next week if you don't.
I think we need to do it as a best practice, and if, especially, yeah. Thank you to whichever auditor told you that we should be doing this.
Well, on his case, he's only get, would be the one.
One deputy, yeah. But it's still, it's, it's a formal process, so. And again, if, if indeed, somebody were to. Get reelected or not get reelected and somebody new came in, we would go through the same process.
You have a. Person, they can have whoever.
Exactly. Okay.
I know several, it's got to be an issue.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero zero two, Appointment of Deputies.
Second.
There's a motion, second.
More discussion, thank you, Courtney. Um, resolution, roll call please.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. I don't see that item number. Six showed up, so. Okay.
Do they know, do we know how much they were requesting?
I don't. But. Which is not up before to review. Thank you, Courtney. Committee reports.
Last week, I didn't have any official meetings and this week I have newspaper, radio and had conversations with secondary roads already this morning and I would like to wish everybody a happy new.
I have nothing last week or this week. I would suggest so that. Richard, make sure we get these filled in as soon as possible. But this don't.
They're going to continue to be agenda items.
Dragged out every year like it does. And I wish everybody a happy new year.
I have nothing either, yes. Just finishing up my. Other jobs, I've had more time to get all exact and build and go on some road trips and. See other department work, that's I'm really looking forward to doing that, so. That's all I have.
Welcome aboard for your official term.
Thank you.
Last week, Monday, I had newspaper radio. Thursday, I did work with Sarah on the zoning process going forward with the, regarding the two-mile. And also Courtney and I did discuss. Situations and what House File Seventeen is going to do with that, it looks like. Courtney, tell me that the county taxable valuation grew fifty thousand nine hundred and twenty is what? Fifty million and twenty thousand. Just missing three zeros. Fifty million nine. So.
Holy crap.
And it is going to. Have a copy of it, but. That puts. Evaluation growth roughly three point oh one percent, but I think Office of Budget and Management rounded it up to three point one.
That credits? So if you want, I can tell you.
Yes, please.
So the general fund, our taxable growth was three point zero seven, and if you remember that three percent is the. Magic number, so they're limiting our growth by one percent. So our revenue growth is going to be two point zero five percent. In the general fund. Last year it was one point four seven, so we are actually being allowed to grow. A little more this year, which is better than last year. On the rural side, we had a growth of three point nine five. Which is, again, over the, over the limit, they're only limiting that percentage as well, one percent. So we're going to be able to capture two point nine two percent revenue growth in the rural. Last year was one point four six, so that's significantly higher. If you remember, we don't take a ton of stuff out of the levy, but rural is a big one in the sheriff's office as well, so. That looks better for most.
Great, thank you. Um, and then Friday, I did receive an inquiry about. Yard or in the courthouse, does that need to be tall? So I did. Some research. On that, we do, but that bell was, I think it was eighteen eighty-eight to nineteen sixty-five, it was on top of the old courthouse and it's been sitting there ever since. This week. I did receive a call about the landfill cardboard container being full for a rural resident or for, yeah, rural residents, and I did talk to them. Small cardboard. Out there now, went out and checked it, yes. And tomorrow. Wrote one. All I have. Next week, which will be here rather quickly.
I talked about the growth of evaluation and I think they're not. Run the number of what our evaluation is. So actually, one billion, seven hundred and forty thousand, six hundred and fifty-five dollars, five hundred and seventeen. So I'll be, I'll have the evaluation report next week for your approval. Well, I kind of wanted to ask you because I've been getting asked by departments when they can do it. I think the board should kind of find a date. I don't have any back from anybody.
So can you ask who is ready and we can start doing it?
On them?
As far as I'm concerned, and let them know, we want to know.
Would like to have a marked up copy of what they're going to present. And let them know they will be presenting electronically, so. As far as. In person electronically, so it'll be different this year. But I think we all need to get a copy of whoever's presenting, what their changes are with an explanation. Well, they just said they're going to be presenting and it will be on screen, we'll be using the document camera.
So they could bring a paper copy, they're just.
Exactly. We will be able to read them on our laptops live. That would work too, yep. All right. Absolutely. Well, I think we can call.
Are you just going to figure this out?
I'm, I'm talking to Courtney right now, but including the rest of the board. But I think we should all look at our calendars and. Some ideas were maybe a Monday, Wednesday, nine to noons, or Courtney suggested an all-day workshop.
Well, there's a lot of times we've done, we've went into a Monday session and went into. Budgeted after that and then worked. And once came back after lunch.
Yeah, I'm open to any ideas.
That would be fine.
I think it would be nice to pick days when we're all going to be here. And Courtney, do you think Monday is going to be quick, today's Thursday?
Uh, you're going to be out there.
So maybe on Wednesday, or I'm sorry, on Monday, the thirteenth?
And just you, like.
Are you on the twentieth? Okay.
And there's a few departments too, like we can stagger out, we know which ones, like for instance, secondary roads, the sheriff, there's.
Conservation, ambulance, those are the big ones.
More time. And then you have other ones that don't take as much time and we know that, so we can make sure we stagger those out. Correctly, and so we're not.
Plus with a new member, I think we might be asking the department heads or elected officials to go into more depth. And then there has been discussion about the line item. Verbiage that is on it, maybe we can rename some of those while we're doing it and get rid of, yeah, telegraph and. Phonograph some of the titles that are in the names also.
What are you thinking?
I guess it's a group decision, the sixth is going to be too soon, but the thirteenth and twentieth are very.
That works, maybe the fifteenth and sixteenth, fifteenth and sixteenth is the new train, so.
Yeah, I think if we do it Monday and just if we, if we're here, we're here.
Exactly.
So we don't come back, yeah.
That was the one you were, okay, so the thirteenth and twentieth, we can plan on. Extended meetings with. And I think. Again, the ambulance, roads, sheriff and conservation usually are the heavy hitters as far as. That could take an hour and a half, a couple hours each. So you want to send out a email? All right, any comments from those attending in public? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. All in favor, if I was saying aye, aye, opposed. Motion carries.